I'll call the 11 December City Commission Work Session to order. You'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
So again, this is a work session and the item tonight will be the Benefit District Update, and that will be led by Jason.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Just a reminder, back in October of 2017, City Administration put together a memo and a presentation to the Commission talking about different ways in which potentially the city could secure Benefit Districts' special assessments. We had obviously just been through an acquisition and issue at Lee Mill Village where we paid in over $600,000 over the course of six years to buy down specials at that site. We had a developer that defaulted on the property, went to a tax sale, and we ended up purchasing that. Four Winds was another example of a property that had went to the tax sale and specials were abated in that process as well. So we were looking at ways, communities across Kansas and throughout, really throughout the country, but we focused on Kansas just in terms of options that were available to the governing body. We had met with the Flannells Area Builders Association several times in 2017, walking through some of those options at that work session. A pretty good contingency group showed up and responded a lot to the 30% to 35% that some of these communities were requiring as credit or letters of credit or cash in order to leverage that Benefit District tool. Conversation and feedback led us to a different alternative, which is to look at a fee or a percentage, a small 2% to 3% fee that we would require developers to pay when they submit those petitions. It's obviously been over a year since we've talked about that, but we recognized it was one of the goals of the Commission to revisit that opportunity. So we created obviously the item for this evening to walk through that option. I have all the October of 17 information, presentations. Commissioner Ke, I know you weren't here at the time, but it's one of those opportunities for further education if you'd like it. We have some data that I would share with you just based on where we were last year. We've done approximately $70 million in special assessments since '06. And again, this is based on our October of 17 presentation. We're over 98% when it comes to collections on that outstanding debt. Through that same period of time, or really that 16-year period, over 6,600 units were developed, 2,622 single-family, 617 two-family, and you can see the multifamily. Over $1.8 billion in property was added during that timeframe, and we're generating obviously $8 million in city property taxes since 2000 just on that development. When we looked at those alternatives originally, again, these weren't well-received by our area builders and developers on the letter of credit, the bond or the cash. And we had some legal challenges with that, too. Even looking at what other communities had done, there wasn't a whole lot of confidence that those could be implemented and administered in a way that wasn't going to be problematic. The developer impact fee, though, was more of a recognition that something could be done by way of trying to provide a revenue stream to offset the exposure. We did provide some examples, and this is the one of the 35% down, where a typical Benefit District of around $1.8 million would generate that $630,000 payment. If the developer improved the lots, then it obviously could be returned. If the lots were not improved, then it would remain with the city. The percentage is an accumulation of money over a period of time, so it doesn't return to the developer. It's a fee they pay at the onset when the petitions are filed. If we had had that in place since '06, that $70 million would have generated about $1.4 million that could have went into a reserve fund to help offset some of those delinquencies that we've experienced. The memo this evening talks a little bit about a draft ordinance that we assembled and delivered to you all, really trying to create this 2%, set forth this 2% fee, but also create a fund by which these dollars could go to on a per-project annual basis. It would require that developer to submit 2%, but it'd be based on that 75% total estimate within the petition. We recognize not all petition amounts are actually realized. Projects realize savings through bidding. Projects sometimes reduce in scope. If they increase in scope, there's an amendment that comes back before you, and there's a process by which we would be able to capture that 2% as well. But if they decrease, we wanted to give a percentage here of an overall that would be encompassing on what we see for the most part. So that 75% would be exposed to that 2% fee under this scenario. Establishing the fund obviously gives the city some discretion and the ability to use that and reserve it for that specific use. You will see some language in here about maintaining a balance in that fund, the words reasonably necessary to be available to address the payments. Recognizing Benefit Districts stay in place for 20 years. So if we have outstanding debt, it wouldn't make a whole lot of sense for the governing body or us to recommend that we use any of that for any other purpose other than delinquencies. If for some reason the tool of Benefit Districts was totally abandoned within the city and we had no outstanding debt, then they would afford the governing body the opportunity to use that for however it sees fit. But I think you would always hear from administration, as long as we have debt outstanding, there's always the risk for delinquencies, and keeping that fund at a healthy balance would make a lot of sense. We're looking in this draft, and we just wanted to go out a few months, obviously, with the effective date. There are current projects in play. There are petitions you'll be considering at the meetings in January and possibly in February, so I wanted to give the developers and the builders a little bit of cushion in terms of how we react to future applications. That date can easily be extended into March or April, however you all see fit, but we clearly wanted to give a date here that wasn't just right away, knowing we have active projects. That's really all I have for you this evening. Benefit Districts and special assessments, it is complex, and there's a lot of philosophical discussions about these tools. And the folks behind me obviously have a lot of experience and history with them, too, and are extremely sensitive to it. Manhattan has used them, and I think they've used them very successfully. One of the major points that I like to bring up when we talk about Benefit Districts with the public is the ability for the number of lots to hit the market when the demand is there. It obviously is a tool that the city is for putting in place to financially make that easier for the developer, but it also creates an environment from a demand perspective from the buyer. You know, if developers were restricted to half of what they could do because of what they could leverage via the bank, less lots would be available, less lots for builders who may only buy one or two of these a year. The dynamic that the Benefit District and the petition process create in our community has allowed Manhattan to react to peak demands over the past 10, 15, 20 years in a way that possibly wouldn't have been there if they would have had to gone and privately financed all that infrastructure. Our end-users are obviously paying a rate that is much lower than if the developer went and borrowed that money and then the buyer of the home had to pay for it and the lot cost. Our issuance of debt over the last 10 years has been very low, anywhere from less than 2% to 2.5, 2.75. So those are rates in which are hard to come by at the bank. So it's a piece of the infrastructure, it's a piece of the puzzle, and it's one that, for the most part, has worked out favorably for citizens of Manhattan. But I'd be happy to answer any questions on the approach and on the alternatives, or even back to some of our discussions in October of 17.
I have some questions, and this might just be catch-up for me, but when you showed the slides showing that of the $75, $70 million that we had issued, only 1.75% I think was late, abated or uncollected. So is that, then you said later, had we been doing that 2%, we would have collected about $1.4 million. So just to make sure I understand right, that's where we came up with the 2% number, was based on the historical amount that we had uncollected? And that $1.4 million would have covered our losses, because that comes out to be like $1.2 million something?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so that's, I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Yep.
Yeah, that was, that's my general question. I won't, I won't talk in, yeah.
There's some facts around property changing hands that I think is relevant to the conversation of taxes being collected or uncollected, and Bill Frost may join me here. It's a technical understanding of when property changes hands in Kansas and when taxes are paid. The only time you get into abatement scenarios are when they go to a tax sale and the proceeds from the tax sale don't generate enough to pay those taxes. But we have taken the position, like we did with Lee Mill Village, we went and basically bid what we had already paid, and we received the land. So our exposure is really no greater than it was going into that scenario. The piece that I want to bring to highlight, when property is bought and resold, those liens are satisfied in the private sector. It's really, when it gets to the county and we get in an abatement scenario, that's where the exposure starts to show itself. We had a circumstance in Manhattan in the, I believe in the 90s, where Miller Ranch was part of a default. All those taxes ended up getting paid when that property changed hands. It never went to a tax sale, abatement scenario down at the county. So we recovered, yes, we delayed payment, but we ended up recovering those payments over time. So the scenarios that we're talking about in Lee Mill Village and in Four Winds, they're rare. Obviously, they do happen, but I think from our perspective, a little bit has to do with the product and what is being developed, the type of lots, and ultimately where the market is on that type of product. Obviously, once the infrastructure's in the ground and those lots are platted, hands get tied, and it's very difficult financially to come in and undo that and change the product that you can deliver. So it really goes back to decisions when we annex, when we zone, and when we accept petitions. We have to take it from a view of a little bit of how successful is this product going to be? Our history with single-family has been very good. Our history with projects where they're attempting to do these townhomes and just for whatever reason, these two examples, the market didn't support the product. Now, that's a difficult thing for an organization in the community to react to, of picking winners and losers. And sometimes it's a collective look as to really what is your percentage of abatement overall compared to all the success stories that you do have. But we bring those to your attention just because it's not easy. It's not easy to know, as you all have considered annexations, rezonings, and passing petitions, what's going to be successful and what's not.
So Jason, in the recent past, other than the two that you've mentioned, have there been others that we had? Because in the past, at least six or seven years that I've been on the City Commission, this has happened more recently as far as abatement, but I don't remember it happening in the past. It's not a consistent thing, it's an anomaly of sorts. Do you remember any other times that it's happened other than the past two or three years?
Miller Ranch was the example, and it hung out there for several years until a developer reached terms with the bank and ended up acquiring that property. We've had individual properties, a few lots here and there, but again, as those change over and they actually move from one private entity to the next, those liens are satisfied. It truly is scenarios where you have a product that's just not working in the market, and the developer just walks away. And their bank and them as an individual can't market that property, can't, they just, they quit paying taxes.
My main concern with this is people already say it's very expensive to live in Manhattan. I'm afraid this is going to make it even more expensive because ultimately those fees will be going on to property owners, tenants, or whoever that might be. So as we discuss this, that's something I want us to look at a little bit closer.
Yeah.
And I understand why we need to do it, because ultimately that falls on all of our taxpayers, but at the same time, I want to be cautious as we have this discussion because we don't want to make Manhattan even more expensive. The 2% might not seem like a significant number, but it is, depending on how many millions we're talking about in the development areas.
And you make a valid point. You know, anything we add at the front end will be absorbed more than likely on the back end. And, you know, these fees that are associated, you start spreading that out over 30 or 40 or 50 lots. It's maybe $1,000 to $1,500 per lot. And in the grand scheme of things, when they're selling those things for $35,000 and $40,000 apiece, you know, just, yeah, it's $1,000, and there's $1,500, and you're going to spread that out over a 30-year mortgage. So the impact isn't enormous, but it's still, it's still there, and it's real. It probably hurts our developers more on the front end of just leveraging more into the projects before they actually get a return and sell those lots.
Jason, I'm curious about other communities. Is this, are we going to be a first? Are other, have other communities already kind of paved the way or figured out how to cut the risk to their local budgets?
Clearly, there are other communities with Benefit District policies that put things into place. We explored some in Kansas that obviously require that 30% and 35%, but then release it as time goes along and the projects develop. The fee itself is not new, it's not something that we've come up with. And again, really, it's before you this evening because it's identified as a goal. I mean, it's truly at the discretion of the Commission how you want to move here. We clearly have a process. We do get a 5% fee to go out and inspect and make sure our costs are covered to facilitate these things. Our conversation has been more about exposure on delinquencies, exposure on properties that are out there, and a little bit of anticipation of, you know, a slowdown. And we've seen some residential subdivisions possibly not move at the pace at which developers and builders would like, but that's the reality. How do we position ourselves for the next 10 years, and how do we handle those things? Whether we charge a 2% fee or not, obviously, at the discretion of you all, and do you sense it's necessary in order to protect the city as we move forward with this tool? But by way of protecting other communities and cities that use this tool, there aren't very many in Kansas that use Benefit Districts. Salina uses them, Wichita uses them, there's a little bit used in the metro area, but not much.
And in the other communities, then, it is the burden for infrastructure is on the developer?
Yes, yes. And ultimately paid by the eventual property owner.
But it's long-term, I mean...
They're just rolling that into their mortgages.
Yeah.
Yep. And in this case, it's not rolled into your mortgage, it's a tax you get at the end of the year.
And I saw your calculation with regard to if it were on a particular amount of money, what is the amount you would expect in a year's time? Because the, you know, the economy is cooling a bit, too, so it wouldn't be as aggressive as it has been in the past.
Yeah. The $70 million over that period of time, we had roughly estimated at $140,000 annually coming in.
Okay.
If you take that times 10, it's the $1.4 million. It's that whole period of time. Clearly, we haven't done the average this year, and it doesn't appear as if we'll do the average next year.
Yeah.
But it could easily pick back up. You know, there's, if anybody has their crystal ball, the guys behind me and the developers behind me probably have a better sense of it than we do. We react to them, they react to the market, and they're our best gauge there, yep.
The 75, the calculation is 2% is calculated off of the 75% of the total estimate provided in the petition. So how did you come to 75%?
Well, we started at 100, and we realized that that isn't always the case.
Okay.
And there are plenty of Benefit Districts that start with a petition amount, and we started kind of estimating, you know, the $70 million is actually the debt we've issued. But if you went back and looked at all the petitions for all those projects, you're probably somewhere between 90 and 100 million worth of petitioned projects. But the bidding process brings those down, and just fine-tuning of projects, we encourage our developers to be high on their petition amount. We want to avoid obviously having to come back to you all in the event they bust through their budget and they have to file an amended petition and take that process in time to do so. So our encouragement is to go high, you know, it's a slight percentage higher, but it is higher. But the reality of 75%, we were trying to come up with a number that was reasonable, and that's something that, you know, both you all and the folks behind us wouldn't scream at us about, being more of an accurate reflection of what's built.
Did you give any consideration, this is going to be heresy, I know, but to refunding the 2% at the conclusion of, at a point where you're certain that the risk has been neutralized?
The 2% on the risk that wasn't neutralized is not going to be near enough money to make a difference in what you're experiencing.
Yeah, okay.
If you're going to go that route, it's more of that 30% and 35% that then is released, and you still have exposure there.
Yeah.
And one could argue your exposure is just 30% less of the $1.2 million that we've paid out so far. So you're still going to be out quite a bit of money in those scenarios. This was an approach to try to address it comprehensively, that through time would be there to offset some of those expenses. Clearly, today, taxpayers across the community are making up for those delinquencies through the bond and interest fund.
And the interesting thing, of course, with this is, you know, even if the developer sells everything, you're still at risk as an individual homeowner that owns a home can go bankrupt and it can wind up on a tax sale. So this is comprehensive because it goes through that. Now, when you look at any tax sale that takes place at the county, any property that still has a special on it, we're at risk. You know, the homeowners, the business owners in town are going to pay that abatement fee if it doesn't sell for a reasonable price.
And we recognize a lot without an improvement is much different than a lot with an improvement. With an improvement, and that's probably why Bill came up, with an improvement, it does provide its own level of security because the value is in the property and the home. If it's vacant, your exposure is much greater.
There really isn't any exposure once the lot's improved, once the house is there, because the specials get paid first. They get paid before delinquent adwarem taxes, they get paid before the mortgage. So if somebody, well, it's even a more lengthy process than that. If somebody goes bankrupt, they own a home on a lot with specials, and they go bankrupt and they can't pay their specials, they're not paying their mortgage either. So what's going to happen is the bank's going to foreclose on that property and purchase it in their foreclosure sale, and in order to do that, they have to pay the specials. So once the lot's improved, the only exposure we have is that there might be a year or two where the specials aren't paid, but once that foreclosure takes place or a sale takes place, those are covered, they're paid. So the exposure, this ordinance is designed to protect the circumstance, the Four Winds circumstance, where there's nothing there to satisfy the debt, and the city's on the hook for it, so.
Essentially vacant lots, like, you know, I have one, specials are paid for on it though, but if I was, you know, didn't, you know, people could have vacant lots and then the specials could not be paid and they would fall in that, but the majority of the houses that are on there, that would not be the case, so I got it.
Even a vacant lot in a developed subdivision, if the owner of that vacant lot fails to pay specials or is in the same circumstance, it's more than likely that the sale of that lot is going to satisfy the specials. Because if it's in a developed subdivision, it has some value. The problem exists where the whole subdivision has no value and you can't recover it. So certainly the value is there if the lot's improved. I would argue that the value is probably there if it's not improved, because again, the specials are going to get paid first at that tax sale, and presumably there's enough there to satisfy it.
The other factor that has played out in our community has been our tax sales haven't been timely. And when you start adding up years, then you get yourself into a scenario where even if the property does sell, you may not have enough to cover those specials. And that's the scenario in which we lose. But I think Riley County has picked up their pace, and we're starting to see them more frequently than the five-year gap that we had. And that really put us behind the eight ball in our Lee Mill Village scenario and Four Winds. But if they haven't worn more frequent, it'll shrink our exposure. We may still have the same set of circumstances, but at least it's not such a big amount and so insurmountable by way of realizing any payoff.
What was the total investment when you add up Four Winds and Miller? Was that around $900,000 if you remember?
The exposure that we've abated is right around $1 million. The investment in both those subdivisions is much higher than that. And we have annual exposure in Lee Mill Village of $115,000.
Yeah.
We're going to pay that this year. So our total exposure went from 558 to 673, and it'll just keep growing if we don't get that property moved and developed and back on the tax rolls. And it, you know, kind of comes back to that strategy we've all talked about, just how much are you going to require somebody to pay for that land? Roughly every parcel out there has a price tag, and it's to pay off the specials, but it also then has a land value. One of our strategies has been, you're going to have the land... One of our strategies has been, you can have the land, just pay us for the specials, get it back on the tax rolls, and without that burden. That's how we're advertised right now, just trying to get interest. We're having a little bit, we're having a few nibbles, and we're hopeful to be able to bring you all something soon, but that's our marketing strategy right now. I just, if we don't get any bites, we probably have to reconsider that. And are we willing to then pay a portion of the specials just to get it back on the market and into a private sector's hands?
We're still trying to market several units together. We have not tried to market individual lots.
They're all available.
Everything's available.
It is not a package deal.
Everything's on the table.
Correct, correct.
I want everything on the table.
Yeah, so all, I mean, somebody could go out there with a couple duplex scenario and come at us from a couple lots and absolutely make an offer. We've reached out, we've written letters, we've advertised, we've got signs on the site. It's a tough, tough market, and then you add the complexity of this on top of that.
I've just got a couple of questions that I'll send to you, and will probably be best addressed by the folks that are going to come up and speak.
Sure.
One of them that I'm used to is performance bonding and diminishing bonding that, whereas you finish a proportion of your work, the bond diminishes, so you've got other, you've got bonding authority that you can use again. The other one is the risk strategy between a landowner, a developer, and a builder. Just like to hear kind of how that's done here, so that I have some idea of what might be available. So at this point, I call for public comment, and so if you come forward, just state your name, and I think we have a sign-in board up there somewhere. We'll try to keep it as short as we can, we're shooting for five minutes here, so I know we've got a lot of folks that like to speak. Yeah, five minutes per person. Do you want to start, Neil, or? They're all looking at you, so, Rich.
It could be a popular thing. He outweighed me. I was hoping he would go first. I'm, good afternoon, Mayor, and Commissioners, I'm Rich Sider, and appreciate the opportunity to have this work session and to talk to you about this issue. There's a lot more people in the community that are concerned about this, they just didn't happen to show up tonight. And I guess the first question I would ask you is the same question I asked you a year ago in October, when we visited this very subject, is there really anything broken? I so much appreciate Jason's information to you because it addresses some of the things that I'm going to ask you in my comments, and I think over the last ten to eleven years, we've issued in excess of seventy million dollars worth of bonds. My understanding and talking to finance today was that the current delinquency rate this year is 1.18 percent, and overall, over that ten to eleven years, it's 1.61 percent. So I was curious as to how are our local lenders doing in relation to how we're doing? So I called one of the larger lenders in Manhattan today and got to talk to the right person, and I was interested in the fact that their delinquency rate was broken out, and I asked for that breakout. And it's about 0.8 percent on commercial and 1.5 percent on residential. So it pretty much closely mirrors what's going on here in the community, and I would submit to you that that's a pretty low cost of doing business. That could be argued, but my argument is it's a pretty low cost of doing business. And while the delinquency rate is certainly something that we have to be concerned about, do we really want to contemplate further adding to the cost of a major tool that this community possesses to stimulate growth? Have you asked the question as to what additional property taxes were generated by these projects? And Jason, thank you, you answered that question. And I suspect it's millions of dollars, and it was. Jason estimated about eight million dollars is what they've returned in the way of taxes It seems to me that it's no accident that we've been an anomaly in the state of Kansas and the Midwest in terms of our growth and our stable economy. And we've been that way specifically because we have tools in our toolbox, like special assessments, available to us. And I submit to you that in the time of declining sales tax collections, building permits, and other sources of revenues, we may be, do very well to be cautious about further adding to the cost of our capacity to generate revenue in other areas any further. I'll let other people here in the audience speak to the residential dilemma that another fee is going to cost, and just speak to what I'm more familiar with, and that's the commercial component. But before I go on, I will tell you that in my opinion, we need to stop talking out of both sides of our mouth in this community about affordable housing. We can't preach that we need affordable housing and then turn around and issue more fees and passing legislation that have to be passed on to the end user. It just doesn't make any sense. The two just don't go hand in hand. Commissioners, I can tell you that in my opinion, to place additional charges on developers who are trying to put in commercial projects will greatly impede or discourage those types of developments from even occurring. I think in addition to the potential risks that you run by offering special assessments as a tool, you need to look at what you get in return. Not only do you need, but you need to see what you potentially have to lose if one of these projects goes bad, but what you've gained in assessed evaluation, and that translates into taxes, jobs provided to our local subs during the construction, and finally, the jobs that are created by the developments, both residential and commercial. I believe that placing an additional, what to me amounts to a one and a half percent impact fee on special assessments will only further discourage potential development in our community at a time when we're desperately in need to expand our tax base. On the example that Jason gave you, which was very well laid out, about the nine hundred dollars that would add to a residential lot, I want you to consider a six-lot commercial development in that same example. Forty-five hundred bucks is what it would add to it. So commercial is a completely different animal, the lot, the numbers of lots are smaller, and the impact to those lots is much higher when you spread them out over the cost of the development. Those are just some of the thoughts and questions that I have, there's many others in the room that would just respectfully ask you to consider those things when you're making your decisions. Be more than happy to answer any questions for you. Thank you.
Questions for Rich?
Okay, thanks.
Thanks very much, appreciate it. You can come on up, Neil, if you want, while he's signing.
Neil Horton with Byer Construction, and I'm also represent a couple of property entities, property development entities in town. I would agree with everything that Rich just said, particularly those, you know, those negative impacts on affordable housing. We, latest numbers I saw have our current housing starts at about half of what they've been over the last couple of years, and I think something like this certainly won't do anything to improve that. So I would caution you on that. Based on the numbers that you threw up there, it seems to me like you're getting ready to penalize ninety-eight percent of the people that do something right in order to cover two percent that do something wrong. And, you know, that kind of amounts to, you know, what's a bad business deal really look like. I think that most everybody, you know, sitting behind me would agree to you that when you put it all into the bucket at the end of the day, and if they covered their costs and everything that they calculated at a ninety-eight percent success rate, they'd be pretty happy with how that turned out. I would be. You asked about bonding, Mayor, and so something I work with quite a bit, I talk to our bonding people, and the kind of bond that you would require, and he was speculating a little bit, is called a financial guarantee bond, that it's not a performance bond. And that, for the bonding company, requires a 100% financial backing behind that. So if you need a, you need to bond a million dollar improvement, they want to see a million dollars cash on, and so I don't think that's a viable solution. You're going to really put the brakes on things if you require something like that. But I would like you to consider some alternative solutions, or certainly think about some things before you move too far down the road here. I think you really ought to figure out how to return a portion of that fee at some point. Don't penalize the people that are doing something right in order to cover, you know, those that aren't. I think you ought to look about a financial review of the petitioner. You certainly have the wherewithal to require audited financials and through some kind of a vetting of that developer who's asking for those kinds of favors from you. The, Jason talked about whether the market was right for some of those products, and I think you ought to look at that, you know, maybe a market study on the development as to whether or not, you know, the market does exist for that. Maybe that's something you should look at. Certainly, there's some vettings that you could do to cover some of those things. And then, it just occurred to me as you were, as some, Jason was talking there, whether or not there's, there's another way of obtaining collateral that would protect the city. I kind of had a brainstorm what that might look like, I don't know that I want to share that right here, but I think that probably there's some things that ought to be explored. Is there another way to obtain collateral on the city's behalf that would somehow be released when the lot was sold to a private individual? Might be some things there worth exploring a little bit that would cover some of your risks there. I really think there are more things to be investigated before we jump into this here. Thanks.
I'm Tim Schultz with Schultz Real Estate Development and Schultz Construction. I certainly agree with Rich and Neil. It does appear to me that you're kind of robbing from the successful developers and paying, paying for a few negative things that's happened in the last few years. The failure of Lee Mill Village came right on the heels of a economic decline nationwide, actually, and lost some investors there, but, you know, that being said, you know, you still got to look at that end game, that end game of that ninety-eight percent success rate and what that creates. I'm actually surprised by the numbers, I was trying to calculate some of that today as I was driving around, and my estimates I thought were impressive, but they were still much lower than what Jason's numbers were on what property tax has been generated by these, you know, by the development over those timeframes. But I would definitely, you know, I would have no problem putting up that fee, but I would still like to see, I would like to see that returned either on a, you know, if you wanted to keep, it's just like West Star does, when we do an electric extension, you know, we pay, they keep a certain amount, but then they refund it as the electric, or it's hooked up gas, generally the same way. That could be an avenue, so as lots do get developed and have a house sitting on them and that, those funds are possibly returned to the developer, I would support that, and I'm not, it wouldn't have to be 100% of that fee, but, you know, again, getting back to that two percent, you know, if you, if you had to keep, on Jason's analysis, you had to keep 10,000 of that, 60,000, you know, and return 50,000 on a per lot basis as those lots develop. That would be acceptable to me, but I also have a couple of questions. I mean, if you, there's also some current policies now that, you know, require builders to be in good standing. If a builder, if contractor A buys a lot and he's going through hard times and that property ultimately becomes abated, is he currently, would he be continuously on a blacklist where he couldn't get another building permit? Is that, would that be true? Okay. And that, again, you can see how serious that part of it would be, and those things happen, and you basically take that business out of the equation, but that'd give us a lot of thought before I'd implemented it. Again, I think there's, there is some room to develop a policy like this, but I do think that that, those funds should be at least in part refunded back to the developer as that project succeeds, so, thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, we'll close public comment and go back to Commissioners. Final comments?
I'll start. So, first, thank you for your comments. Helped with some thoughts that I had about it, but first and foremost, just in general, just because the idea of affordable housing came up a few times, if we really want to talk about affordable housing and the impacts that decisions like these have on that, I think that at the same time, then we also have to seriously explore the impacts that specials have on affordable housing to begin with. While I understand many of the benefits that specials have provided to our community in the past, I also think it'd be pretty difficult to argue that they don't have an effect on the people who can buy homes here. And I'll give you an example. I, for the last year, have been in the process of trying to buy a home, and when I go with 60,000 dollars in student loan debt, particularly what my lender is concerned about is my debt-to-income ratio. So it was an important thing for me is not necessarily my creditworthiness, but how much with my debt can I afford to pay monthly? And when I add special taxes, when I add a special tax on top of my mortgage, it's nearly impossible for me to be able to afford that. And when you have specials that are over a 20-year time that I have to pay back, and you have a mortgage that's over a 30-year time, I would almost rather that special tax be built into my mortgage because my monthly payment will be lower. I've hashed it out 100 different ways, and in both scenarios that I saw it, if my special was built into the price of the home, my monthly payment would be lower. I can't convince my mortgage lender to build that, to pay off those specials so I could build into my mortgage, and I don't have 20, $20,000 in free cash to pay off. So I can't tell you how many young families that I've talked to that have bought houses outside of town in the last couple of years because they couldn't find a market where the specials didn't price them out of it. That being said, again, I do understand previously why specials have helped, and I'd probably feel totally different about it if we could figure out a way to sell those specials out on the bond market over 30 years rather than 20 years. That being said, the two percent, I think it's important that we do figure out a way that we mitigate the risk for the taxpayer, because while it is only two percent, the other thing that raises the price of home is the mill levy increase. Every time we have to raise property taxes, that makes homes less affordable as well. And while I understand that it's only two percent that are falling behind, that is a, that's still an expense that we have to put on a taxpayer and in a tight budget that's probably going to raise through a mill increase. And I realize 98% of the time, business is being done right, but we can't argue that specials are making a lot of people in this room a lot of money. And I, so I think for the benefit of being able to use the full faith and credit of the city to pay for your infrastructure, it's not too much to ask for the developers to cover the risk of the taxpayer. That being said, Neil's idea in terms of financial reviews and market studies, I do think are somewhat interesting. One of the things that we've talked about a lot is a housing study, and you did know that one of the ones that fell through were largely market forces, right? Would a housing study help us figure out if, you know, this certain type of housing is actually going to sell in Manhattan or if there's a need for it? I think there, there's legitimate, there's a legitimate argument. There are also financial review of the developer, and we don't do that at all really right now. Why is that, why do we do that differently than we would economic development? I mean, economic development is, I mean, we have a semi, at least, we have a financial review essentially.
Yeah, the review itself really hasn't been defined, but we would scrutinize everyone the same. And it's not to say that scrutiny couldn't be there, it's typically, when you look at programs like that to evaluate, you're basing it off of something you're dealing with, you know, and we would clearly have to dive into a program and define just what it is we're evaluating. We know the majority of the developers that come to us are repeat developers. We know the majority of the developers that come to us are repeat developers in Manhattan. There are occasions where they're outside. They always have that opportunity to do private infrastructure as well. So, you know, when it comes to public versus private, whether or not they wanna subject themselves to that or not. But yeah, the exposure to the city on the public side is, is obviously what we're talking about.
I agree. And I'm, I think that's essentially the argument that I'm trying to make is that if you don't wanna pay the 2% fee, you don't have to and you can do the infrastructure privately, but to cover the risk of the taxpayer. Right now, I would generally say I'm supportive of the 2% fee. With that being said, if some of the other commissioners agree, I, I would like to maybe understand better how, if there's a possibility that something like a financial review or some kind of large market study over the next 10 years could help us better make these decisions and maybe eliminate some of our risk. And if it is possible at all, that over time, there would be a way, if we have money setting in that fund, to return it back somehow over time. I, 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 I'm not necessarily against that idea either, but the foundational idea of the city finding a way to cover our risk on that 2% I'm fully supportive of.
Yeah, so I understand why we have to, why we're looking at this. I think we brought it up earlier, but my concerns still remain the same. Because it's only 2%, I understand it's millions, over a million dollars that we have to collect from our taxpayers, especially our property owners. It's been pointed out that the county is doing a better job on collecting delinquency taxes, so I think that helps us instead of doing it all in one chunk. I think that was one of the problems we've had. Jason mentioned that earlier. But my concern right now is also that we're, there's a slow growth, not only in Manhattan, but in Kansas in general. And I would hate to put another type of fee on our developers when we're trying to recruit people to move to Manhattan, recruit businesses to move to Manhattan and have that fee fall onto property owners and tenants and whoever else that might be. I don't think that's a cost burden that we should look at right now, maybe in another two or three years. But we have fewer students enrolled, we have a lot of soldiers that are gonna be deploying, we are in a tight market business-wise. Trends are showing that we are losing population in Kansas, in the state of Kansas. And I don't think we can afford as a community to have one more fee to add on to it. We're constantly talking about our utility fees, all types of enterprise fees and all these other things that we're looking at. But this is one thing that I don't wanna look at right now, or at least maybe even decrease, decrease it to just 1% or just hold off for a few years. I wanna create as much development as possible without putting more barriers to it. And I think a lot of things, like I said, have been and put in place. We are collecting more frequently on our delinquency taxes. It works in the developer's best interest to do the specials because they get a lower interest or it's a, it's a better bargain for the property owners that are buying houses. I know that every time a faculty member comes to buy a house here, there constantly is this sticker shock to specials in Manhattan, Kansas. And if we are just one of a handful of communities that have specials, we can't afford to have one more thing to attach, attach to that specials right now. Though I understand why we have to do it, I'm, I'm not going to put as much momentum behind it at this time. I would rather look at it in another two or three years once we have growth happening. Right now, it's very stagnant, if not decreasing. And I don't think that's a good time to put on more, more barriers for developers or property owners or students or who, or anybody else that's gonna be paying that. So that's where I stand on this at this time.
So when we talked about this, you know, last October, I guess in my mind, you know, what I'm hearing is the specials are really a great thing. Everybody seems to like them, at, at least in the building community. What happens if we do away with them, like Overland Park? Is that worse than 2%? And the, and the cost of building something?
Would you like an answer?
Yeah, if, if somebody could. I mean, because, because that's, I think, what people are weighing is, is the idea that, you know, okay, if this is such a great benefit, if we do away with it, what's the harm?
Well, you'll elim, you'll eliminate, if you wanna eliminate the specials, then all the cost of developing that infrastructure so that home can be built will be pushed into the lot. And you'll have the carrying costs of that, financing of that, those infrastructure improvements upfront, paid by the developer. He'll push that into the lot and then you'll get to pay the mortgage rate of whatever the going rate is on that instead of paying a, a city municipal bond rate, which is probably 2% to 3% lower. It's not a cheaper alternative. And there, I, when I hear you talk, you, you, I, I get the sense that, that you think that the developer would build all that for free. He's not going to, he's gonna charge you for it. He's just gonna push it into the cost of the lot.
Yeah, I understand that. My, my thought was, you know, I looked at some, some properties in Overland Park years ago and they didn't have specials and I was, you know, weighing that with Manhattan. And it looked like, you know, as, as Commissioner McKee said, you know, it, it looked like, you know, they're being developed and people are paying the mortgages and it's rolled in the mortgage, the homeowner's gonna pay the same. So, so the advantage of the special is not really for the homeowner. It's gotta be for the builders.
Commissioner, it can be, it can be for the homeowner and just Jared, you're, let's just walk through an example. If, if we don't have specials and the cost of that infrastructure is rolled into the lot, houses in Manhattan today, as you explore MLS, would jump 50 to 60,000. So the houses that you are out on the market looking for today, maybe in the 185, 200,000 range, add 60,000.
I guess that's a hard, I guess the hard thing for me, other than you just saying it right now, I guess I would want some analytical evidence of that. Because per lot price in Manhattan is still much higher than the rest of the state of Kansas. On average, we sell homes here more expensive than the rest of Kansas.
Oh, sure, sure.
And affordable housing problem is just as bad, if not worse than the rest of Kansas. So specials are just this amazing thing that's solving the affordable housing problem, then why do we still have this problem exacerbated here?
Yeah, and I, I, I don't know if they necessarily have a correlation by the use of special assessments and the cost of our housing. But what I would offer you to think about is not only the 60,000 difference, but if you're not gonna own a home for 20 years, that cost is spread out over 20. Because you always have the option to pay those specials off. They won't, you can roll it right into your mortgage.
No, not the mortgage I was looking into.
They probably wouldn't let it because it adds 60,000.
Exactly, the underwriter said, why would we take on the risk that the city has right now?
And it does allow people to do something that they have to be very, they have to calculate. They gotta be wise in how they purchase property in this community because specials buy a lot of people in, in the rear because they're not anticipating them like they do their property taxes. But what it allows them to do is take an annual payment and make it and worry, I mean, it's a one-year approach. If they move out of that house in five years, they didn't have to finance 15 years of debt upfront. It was passed on and spread out over that 20-year period. If you would've had to roll it in your mortgage, your bank more than likely would've told you, you don't qualify for that loan. It's 60,000 more than you can afford.
I agree with you, but it still comes, I guess, it still comes down to the fact that what is considered in the price range for someone like me in Manhattan, a lot of times has specials on top of it. And the monthly payment is mostly what I care about because I'm not gonna live in that house for 30 years to live out the life of my mortgage either or live out the life of that interest.
Yeah, one way, one way to look at it is the specials are actually making it more affordable for you to leverage a house that you desire versus one you could possibly afford.
Either way, I'm not really advocating tonight to take away specials. What I'm advocating is the 2% to...
I just wanted you to be aware of the analysis because the 60,000 is real.
Yeah, let's focus on the item itself.
I agree. I, it's just if we wanna talk about affordable housing, I think that we need to talk about it in a large scale, not just how 2% is gonna totally undermine the special system.
I, thank you. I do support benefit districts. I think that our community over the years has re, as the word implies, the term, has really benefited from the opportunity to do it the way we've been doing it as opposed to the developer having to afford it. And it also keeps the city from picking winners and losers among developers so that most developers can use our process. And I, I'm always struck by even each time we talk about this, we are still one of the few communities that do it. And I don't necessarily understand that rationale, but I know it's hard in those other communities. I also think it would lead to a lot of more development out in the county where the specials aren't required. You can get by with a gravel road and a septic system and so, but I'm also, while I support the benefit districts and I really, I would say I'm a strong supporter of benefit districts, I also feel the need to protect the city's budget and our taxpayers from the kind of thing that has happened with these two recent situations. And we did go down a long time without any disasters and this was kinda like a flood sneaking up on you, you know, it just comes out of nowhere and suddenly you're in, in the middle of it. So the only thing I can think of is that we have to look at the process and I'm glad that we're looking at this. I think it's an important examination. For the whole of the subdivision, I, I am, continue to be very unhappy with the delinquent property tax processes from the state and the county. I think we are downstream far enough that we have very little recourse. And in these last situations, we had very little recourse except to try to neutralize the amount of money that we lost. And, you know, the expectation is that eventually we will make it up and purchasers will eventually start paying the specials, but it's, in the meantime, it's costing us every year to 114,000, Jason, a year, something like that. So I feel an obligation to figure out how to stop that kind of a leak or a, and so I wanna keep working on this. I don't know that this, you're not asking for something and I don't know if it's tonight's the night, but directly, but, but as we've seen it play out, I, I would hope that there needs to be work at the state legislature with regard to delinquencies and even continue to push the county so that their processes are timely. And I would like, I feel the need just to cover our costs also. And that's what I think is 2%. And maybe there's another model, but if we can't find anything else, then I support the 2%. So I hope that as Neil, you suggested, there might be an alternative of some kind or maybe, you know, some of our collective thinking can come up with something that would be comparable somehow. I do support paying the specials off in 20 years because I think after that, they kinda start failing and need revisiting and the city budget is hit again with replacement and having to rehabilitate. And I do support vetting of the petitioner. And I don't know, I, I agree that if we can vet economic development, we can vet, and certainly if we have 10 questions we, that we would satisfy ourselves with, I would be, that, to me, that, this is big bucks. It's not, we're not talking about dime store kinds of values here. Anytime we're a million dollar, we lose a million dollars or we have to pay 114,000 a year, we have that financial, we wouldn't, we would not want a drain of, we wouldn't allow anything else like this to just completely disappear from our books. So that's basically what I'm thinking.
I'm sure you're gonna have a great time sorting this out. You know, this was, I think, begun as a reaction to the timing of relatively close together of the property at Four Winds and then followed by that at Miller. And it gave the impression that there was kind of a problem at hand. And so we asked the staff to see some remedies to that. You know, I would agree that 98 plus is pretty good, pretty good record. You have to pay on the front, you have to pay in the back, it's all gonna come out the same. And I, I do appreciate the comment about all the guys that, that the developers have done such a great job over time, being penalized for the faults of a few. So I think the remedy might lie in a process. And the process has to include zoning, it has to include the, the planning commission. And we don't decide that all by ourselves, there's a process that follows that brings it to us. And then maybe sorting that process a lot, out a little bit. And I think there were other two things that were mentioned here that were worthy to follow up on, just maybe as a way ahead so we can come back to this at some point. And that's how to, this evaluation process on our side in addition to those two bodies I mentioned. And then Neil had some ideas about the city obtaining a risk instrument. And I don't know much about that either. I mean, I've been on the developing side, I haven't been on the government side, so I don't understand how that might work, but it's worth looking into. And it may, it may in fact just be like a, a little bit like a bond, you know, that, that we might finance short-term, I don't know. But I think those are the kinds of things we might wanna look into here. I'm not sure you've got a consensus to move ahead with a, with a fee. So is that, you know, everybody's feeling?
You know, my thought on the whole thing is, you know, I look at the fee, it, it reminds me like a self-insurance policy. Because what we had was a special, what, what, what business guys would say is a special cause event, because we had these two properties that drove us this way. It's not common cause, it doesn't happen every day. And, and if you have a special cause event, then you need to do something to prevent it from happening again. And of course, the options were, you know, we talked about doing away with specials, but that obviously not gonna happen. Nobody fell in line with that, is why I brought it up. So this looks to me like, you know, a, a method which is not extreme and, and it does mean that, you know, the 98% that are doing well end up contributing to this insurance fund. And I think that's why maybe the city staff came up with that as a, as a solution. And it might drive up the cost a little bit, but it does mitigate the taxpayer having to, you know, pay for when failure takes place. And so I, you know, I didn't really see a problem with the, with the 2%, but there's also been some changes in our process since these two went bankrupt. And that, and that is, we did tighten the screws on, you know, the qualifications of, you know, we're, we're looking at the builders and, and, you know, do they have any delinquent taxes and things like that? And so that might tell us that the process has already been changed to where this might not happen again, I don't know. So, so I'm still open at, at looking at the, you know, at a 2% or 1% if we view it from the standpoint of a self-insurance policy. But we might wanna look at, you know, as, as the mayor says, the entire process and maybe it's already set up so that it more than likely won't happen again.
Is it possible to bring this back in six months or so? And will they give you enough time? I know, I know busy you guys are, but.
We can, it's something you can talk about further in your goal-setting session too, as to how it fits with the other priorities.
Yeah, all right.
I do wanna say, like I said, I'd rather look at this a few years from now. I think the county has done a better job of collecting delinquency taxes on properties more annually as opposed to five years or even 10 years. I think they're also working on it on their end. I do wanna see some type of trends as to development in our community and in our Flint Hills region. What are the trends have been for the past maybe three to five years? Like I said, I don't wanna put an extra burden when we're trying to come out on top or even break even. It doesn't make sense to me when we're trying...
on top or even break even. It doesn't make sense to me when we're trying to add more fees and have more barriers and constraints at the same time trying to recruit businesses and homeowners and students and soldiers and everybody else to move here. They're not going to move here if it's not, if we don't have one less thing for them to be concerned about. And we're adding more constraints as opposed to not putting something on there that's not on there right now. Let's work with what we have first and see what we do as well as with the county and how they're doing on their delinquency tax collecting on the properties as well. But I'm not in favor of doing the 2%, not in this, at least in the next couple of years.
Not enough?
Yeah.
All right. Well, that was the only business to come before the commission tonight. So we'll stand adjourned. Thanks, everybody.